Good evening, please rise to join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll please.
Saunders.
Here.
Rhodes.
Here.
Spinks.
Here.
Coachy.
Here.
Nizak.
Here.
Glory.
Here.
Here.
Here. Council, you have the minutes of the work session of February 5th, 2018. Any corrections? None? And a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janutus, call the roll.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
Nizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Glory.
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of February 5th, 2018. Any corrections on that one? Sitting none, could I have a motion for acceptance by Nizak, second by Saunders? Call the roll please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
Nizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Glory.
Yes.
We have no presentations tonight. We'll get right to old business. Ordinance number 9561-18. Good evening, everybody. An ordinance, amending ordinance number 9366-16, declaring section 110504 entitled, Recreation Program and Registration Fees of the Qualified Ordinants of the City, and declaring an emergency. I believe we still have a couple of questions on that, so I'd like to put that on second reading. Motion for such. By Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll please.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
Nizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Glory.
Yes.
Reports, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make an announcement that starting on Monday, February 22nd, the Allenwood facility will be closed. We will be starting the process of the asbestos abatement and subsequent improvements that will be needed to take place afterwards. We are working to finalize and obtain the rest of the quotes to present to council for LED lighting retrofit and all their ceiling work that has to take place once that asbestos is complete. The contractor will be submitting notice to proceed to the EPA, which is required by law. We have to give a 10-day notice, and they're working through that now, prior to them starting. But as of Monday, the 26th, the staff will be reporting up to City Hall. We have the space in the office area. And anybody needing to contact them, email, phone, all of that will still work. It'll merely be redirected up here to City Hall, so none of that will change. I did want to commend Jennifer, who's been working in the development office. We were successful in partnering with the BCDC to obtain a $45,000 grant for the Broadway Corridor for storefront improvements. This is county funding. The idea is we want to be able to offer another tool for property owners, business owners, to make improvements to their facilities. Signs, mortar work, doors, windows, anything along those lines. We are working with and reached out to our local banks for contact information and potential programs that any of those banks will or can offer to small businesses, with the idea that they can go ahead and if they need to get a loan just loan or short-term line of credit to match those dollars, they can do that. All of the bank information, the application, and letter explaining the program will go out in the next couple of weeks, sometime in March, and it'll be a good, definitely, the county will look at that program as a win. So I wanted to commend her for working on that application. There has been some discussions about solicitors in the city. Currently, we only have one solicitor registered. Okay, when a solicitor registers with the city, they have to come here. We do a background check and get fingerprinted. They pay a fee, and ultimately, we provide them with an ID badge. Anybody that may have a solicitor at their door, or somebody catches them on the street, asks to see that badge. If they don't have it, then that's a red flag. Or if you're inquiring and you just see people going through the neighborhood, I urge everybody, listen, contact PD, contact the non-emergency number. We'll go out there and check. But as of today, we only have one female registered, and she's registered for Constellation Energy. And we do put those on our city website or post those as far as who is registered. Salt damages, obviously, today you don't think about salt when it's a Saturday. We are still dealing with some of those delivery challenges that I think everybody's aware of now. To date, we have identified just over $3,000 in liquidating damages, so we are holding that provider accountable for that. When they can't meet our delivery needs, we're going to go after those fees, and we're at about $3,000 for that. Wanted to acknowledge the public and everybody for the reference in recycling. We had a report that we presented to council, our refuse report, which also identifies the recycling numbers, and we were at 20% last year, which was good. It continues to go up. Everybody knows, obviously, the more we recycle, the less the city will ultimately be billed as we are billed per the tonnage. And again, that report's available. If anybody's interested in seeing what that breakdown is, we can provide that. I did want to also mention that the annual Easter egg hunt, we are going to be moving that over to the high school this year. It's going to be a first. We haven't done that. It will be held on the football field on March 24th. So again, it's for all ages. Any further details, feel free to give us a call, and we can provide that. And lastly, again, anybody looking to take the police entrance exam, please come here and sign up. I think we're at about 12 right now. So we're continuing to try to promote that exam. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Director, just briefly, just want to congratulate all the appointees to all the boards and look forward to working with you in the future. And that's about it. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Jennifer, Assistant Finance Director, for sitting in for Frank tonight. Thanks for being here, and we'll have a report.
Do you guys have a report at this time?
Hey. We never hear that from the finance. She cut it off. Before we get into our council reports, I want to mention we have a special birthday coming up tomorrow. This is Spinks. She's celebrating her 39th birthday again. So happy birthday. And she had a special surprise where her son, Rue, flew up from Austin, from Texas, near Austin. He's a police officer down there, and we got tests for police if you want to read them. You're so big guys. Thank you for being here. Quite a surprise for her. It was great. Thanks for being here. And with that, we'll start with our council reports. But again, happy birthday. Mr. Saunders.
Mike, you mentioned the egg hunt is the 24th. It's usually the Saturday before Easter, which would be the following week. They're moving it up a week?
No, that's the week where we are doing it.
Okay, make sure we get that advertisement out, because most people are doing the same as the Saturday before Easter. And with Easter being on April Fool's Day, unusual bit anyway. Okay, as long as we get that out. You made mention of the recycle. If you remember back when we originally instituted rubbish fee, we had stated that if the recycling went up significantly, which it has done, that we would reduce the rubbish fee. Are we looking at doing that possibly this year? Or are we just going to leave it alone and ignore what we had said many years ago?
Well, it's not our intention to ignore anything. We can absolutely revisit that. At this point, I think you're well aware of where our numbers are this year.
Oh, I know.
And I don't think we're in a position to reduce those fees as of this point. But we provide those reports twice a year typically to council. You know, we make recommendations. We would listen to recommendations as well. At this point, we're not in a position, you know, speaking of that, in my office, and I think Frank would agree, to reduce those costs. We're just merely getting out of where we were. I think it would be not wise to do that as of this time.
Yeah, especially this year, because we're still in a budget problem. But speaking of rubbish, it's getting to be more and more where people are taking their rubbish out on the weekends. And it's getting to be a little bit of, especially in my section, in my ward, we only picked up till Wednesday. Presidential area, they'll take them out Saturday or Sunday, and they get picked up on Tuesday. I know it's supposed to be the police department that goes around and notifies the people that you can't put it out until 6:00 PM the night before. Although in the wintertime, since it gets dark earlier, I don't think anybody's going to complain if you put it out after 3:00. But it's just becoming more and more prevalent, that and the fact that some houses don't take their cans in for two, three days. So it's getting to be more of a problem in these things. Couple of weeks ago, when we had the windy day, some of those houses had put it out early. The lids blew open and stuff blew all over the neighborhoods. So if we could concentrate, or at least maybe in the next water department memo, remind people what the regulations are for putting trash out, because it seems to be laxing again. So if you could look into that, it would be much appreciated. And then back to garbage again. Did you get an answer from University Hospital who's responsible for emptying those trash cans?
Kimball has been doing that.
Kimball has? Okay, because they seem to fill up very quickly. It was a good idea to have those out there, because it has safe trash from going around the neighborhood, but people are using them, so.
Yeah, we've ran into a couple. That one's not as bad, because I believe it does have a lid on it.
Yeah.
We are running into, for instance, we have a couple cans on Norfield Road, one near Norfield and Columbus, that does not have a lid. One of the things that has happened, we've experienced it in the past downtown, during the cold months, when things freeze, believe it or not, when they would go to empty those, it's literally frozen in there. And they're not going to do anything about it. They're just going to move on.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm not saying that is what's happened there. But, you know, Kimball is aware of that. We spoke to them. It was about a week ago. Reminded them of that, reminded them of the location on Norfield Road, where there's a receptacle, as well as the ones in downtown Bedford. We did put lids on the ones in downtown Bedford during the winter months, and put another one, a lid on the Norfield Road location to try to stop the debris of getting around. But we did have a conversation with Kimball regarding those.
Okay, because the hospital ones have come in very handy, and I thank the walkers that got that implemented. It was definitely a great help for the neighborhood, because we don't have as much trash anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes.
Good evening. How's everyone tonight? So.
Good.
Soccer signups will be finishing up at the end of the month with the Mark Center, so if you have a child that you would like to enroll in spring soccer, please take care of that. This past Friday, we had a Main Street program presentation, mostly geared towards the businesses, although we had residents attend as well. I have some brochures down here that talk about what the Main Street program is. It's a revitalization effort put on by the state of Ohio for historic downtowns. We are hoping to go ahead and have them come into an initial assessment of our downtown area, which will give us a one-year plan on how to get into their Main Street program and get further help from them. We have, I've spoken to the council about the city council providing a third of the initial fee. We have pledges from residents that will make up another third of that fee, and then we're going to be doing a fundraiser to come up with the other third. If you have any questions, or you'd like to watch that presentation, please contact me. I will be posting that video of that presentation to the BedfordWord5.com website, as well as the Bedford Neighborhood Watch and Bedford Next Door social media pages. I'm also really excited to announce that we are, the city of Bedford is planning on putting a bike patrol officer back on the streets in downtown Bedford. As soon as we are up to full staff, we will be able to implement that, but that is the city's plan at this point in time. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you. We still have time.
I think you are. I'm down.
Consider that. Mrs. Spinks.
I kind of spoke my whole thing.
Well.
I'm very, just.
I didn't want you to get all emo.
Well, yeah. And I thank my husband for getting my son here. Probably one of the best birthday presents. I wish my oldest son could have came as well, who was born on my birthday. So as a present, it's hard to top. Was born at the same time, same weight, same length. And my dear mom, who passed mid-year, March 8th, was there in the living room with me. So this birthday is a little tough for me, so having my baby, he's a big baby, here with me to celebrate this 50-bent birthday. I'm 75. That's 55 backwards and forwards, I can't even lie. I'll think, do you want to, which is the same both ways. But thank you, Bob. This is, how are you going to talk this? And thank you. Very proud of this police officer here. Who's a proud daddy of my two little wonderful little grandsons. He said they were too bad to park them with. So one year, one and a half year old, and a three and a half year old. So I don't have any report, because I want to get out of here.
So no street owner. Can I say that out loud?
Yes, you do.
This is music.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. We have a nice crowd again this evening. Basically, going to start off the happy birthday mini tour. 55 is a thing of my past, and I'm hoping to make 75, so we'll use it. I still have a few more years for that one. We were invited by the fire department to come over and spend an evening with them, and we did that last Monday night. We learned a lot of things. Actually, we were split into groups, and we actually got to use the thermal imager to, it's a camera that you go into a home, if there's a fire, and you look for people that are probably still in the house. And it was really good, because Heather went in first. As soon as I came in, I had my camera ready, and she showed right up on my screen, so I didn't have to worry about us being an arm's weight. It was wonderful.
All saved my life.
And then we had these, there were new dummies for the CPR. I mean, I don't mean adult dummies, but I mean the dummy dummies. But we got to do that, and of course, I had to get corrected, because when I was doing the compressions, I had it on the wrong part of the dummy. So I got it straightened out, but I did manage to let it survive. But now, the fire department has a new unit. So if you cannot start compressions, this little, it's like a little robot. It'll come over and it'll put a fixer body, and it'll do the compressions for, to help the paramedics, which is an excellent device that has paid its way, has made its way and go to take up the expense. And lastly, there's another way of doing, trying to get into, to get a line in for your vein. There's a little gun, it looks like a little screwdriver gun, and you just hit your shoulder with it, and it just opens up the line and just feed it right in to save a life again, too. And I believe that, I heard that our fire department and one other one in our areas have the two of the best and most qualified employees of firefighter, paramedics on campus, on our campus here and throughout the Kailauga County, because our guys are very professional. And the lady, we have one lady of our paramedic, and they do an excellent job. And nobody should ever worry about something happening, because in Bedford, when they get a call, they're there within three and a half minutes, and they time that down to the last second. And that makes me very proud, because several of us have had to use them, and they're always there for us. There's another issue that I did get a couple comments on, and that happened with the shooting on Florida Friday at the school. We want to make our kids aware of, aware of how to take care of themselves. We have a good resource officer on the camp, on the school campus. I know that they're going to be looking into other ways to prevent something foolish like this to happen to anybody. I think it's good, and I'm right for them. I liked the fact that the students start speaking up and trying to raise a few eyebrows with the old oats that are just sitting on their tops, not helping anybody, just collecting a paycheck. I want to wish everybody a good week and enjoy everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. As far, Mr. Malice, as far as the one solicitor only, there are other, if you could help me out here, understanding, there are other reasons that people could come to your door and not have to have a City of Bedford permit. Is that correct, and for other reasons, there's religious reasons?
The only two you don't have to register is religious and political. So everything else.
Political, someone's coming to get a petition signed, or a candidate, or a religious purpose, they would not need a Bedford permit. Thank you. The other thing is recycling. It's been, it was my understanding that the city of Bedford can only charge its residents for the actual cost of the program with a small addition for administrative. So it's, as Mr. Saunders pointed out, it does seem like it is a reality that our rates could conceivably go down if we recycle more. So I think that is. I think this all works.
We're not, we're not charging more than we're allowed to, by any means.
Right.
And I can get, and if you look at that report, you can see the breakdown all the way per unit, per resident, all of that.
It was slightly misleading saying that, well, we don't intend to do that, but we're getting charged basically exactly what it costs the city of Bedford. There's no savings that the city of Bedford is enjoying that is not reflected in the residents' rates. Thank you. Finally, I had the occasion today to go out into the forest and collect maple syrup sap, and something I do in the spring. I enjoy doing that. And it occurred to me what a tremendous advantage it is to have the right kind of trees planted. And I would encourage the city, whenever there is a planting of any sort, whether it be Arbor Day, or if we ever got to the point where we're able to plant tree lawns again, that instead of planting decorative trees, that we would plant trees that have a specific purpose and a utility as a legacy. And I think sugar maple would be an ideal choice for a tree lawn tree. I did a playful calculation one time to see how much value the trees could be on our tree lawns. And although I don't advocate having fruit trees on our tree lawns, when I did do a calculation, how many fruit trees or tree lawns would conceivably support, and added it up. We have 55 miles of streets, 110 miles of tree lawns. It was a tremendous amount. So I think that we, as a city, ignore our natural capital. And in some places, we plant decorative trees that we found out later are actually invasive species. And I would like to just recommend that whenever the city plants a tree, that we would choose trees that have a purpose and a utility. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty.
Over the last couple of weeks, we had some bad weather before today, or the last couple of days. I still have had a problem in the area as far as businesses up the street on Norfield not shoveling their sidewalks, clearing it for these kids. These kids are getting off the bus, and I experienced by looking one day just to see what they're doing. They're walking down Norfield, because these businesses are not clearing sidewalks. And that's so dangerous, it's unbelievable. I don't understand why they're getting dropped off five blocks from where they lived in the first place. They shouldn't have to walk that far, but I'm going to have to call the school and get a hold of their bus people and see why that bus can't drop these kids off a little closer to their apartments. And, because I talked to them, and I said, "That's pretty ridiculous in the first place." But these businesses, I personally had to go inside, and Lori got me a copy of the ordinance, and the people I did finally get a hold of. And they looked at me like, you know, they didn't know anything about it. But I told them, "Well, just so you know, I live right up the street from you here, so I'm going to be coming down here tomorrow, and I hope these sidewalks are shoveled for these kids." And when I came back, they were shoveled. So that was one good thing. Maybe because I live right up the street, and they think I wasn't just going to blow it off and I'd come back and check. But also, Mike, do we have somebody that shovels Norfield Bridge?
Years ago, the county used to do that, and they says, "You know what? The city can do it now." So what we do is we typically go out there periodically, and not shovel, obviously, we can't dump it in the street, but we go out there with our crews, get it off the sidewalk, and then load it up and take that snow and dump it. So we do do that. You know, it's one of those things that we get to it as soon as possible. If you see it accumulating, or being an issue, or anything, let us know, and we'll obviously expedite that and get there sooner. But that does fall on us, it falls on the service department.
Well, I know in the past from driving around town, I had never noticed it being done, and people walking across the bridge in the street, which is another problem, too, because they're shopping across from the apartments or wherever they're coming from, and they don't have a car. But I did notice it was shoveled. I just want to congratulate whoever actually did that, because it's the first time I've actually noticed it. And I mean, of course, I'm paid now to notice all these things, but before, it's like, "Why are these people walking in the street?" Well, because they never shoveled, and that's a danger. But it was nice and cleared, and that's a great thing. So I want to congratulate those guys. Also, we were invited to a Valentine's Day party up at the high school about a week and a half ago, whatever. There, Sandy and I, and I want to congratulate them for the school for putting on a great, great party. A lot of their, Mark Doff, who's the athletic director, puts this on, and it is Secretary Linda Dengey, I didn't want to pronounce her name wrong. And she puts on, does a lot of work for that. And the kids that were there from the school volunteering and making sure all the people were taken care of. And that's the first time I've been there, and it was a great, great little thing for everybody, all the communities in the Bedford School District. And that was about, what, 180, something like that, people showed up. So kudos to the school district for putting on a good show. Thank you.
That's the end of the report. Thank you. You guys did all my talking for me, so we can move on. We have a motion to accept. Yes, sir. We have a motion on the agenda to accept the planning commission's recommendation of February 6th for Leon Sappett, a Fairview Park architect for Fitzserpita who is seeking board approval for their, I could say, exercise facility. And a yes vote would be granting permission to operate. I have a motion for suspension. A Spinks, second by Fluharty, call the roll. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. Motion to approve.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Coachy.
Yes.
Nizak.
Yes.
Janutus.
Yes.
Glory.
Yes.
And digressing a bit, I believe we have the doctor here for the Fitz Center.
Yes. I want to be operating the center.
There's a young guy who's well-trained and able to operate a fitness center. He's got a following of a number of clients and he'd like to bring his business to Bedford. He's a great young guy, be proud to be associated with him. It's going to be part of a revitalization of the Bedford Market Square, so we're really hoping to get that center up and running.
Yeah, I would say this is one of the first steps to revitalizing that whole area and thank you for doing that.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah, we need a bunch of motions here.
Yes, so a few motions, we'll just go right through them. We have some openings on our boards and, uh, and there's five of them actually. So the first one is the Board of Building Standards and Appeals. Can we get a motion to reappoint Ken Wilson to the Board of Building Standards and Appeals for a five-year term?
Motion for, uh, by Mizek, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Our next board is the Bedford Historical Preservation Board and can we get a motion to appoint Dot Schwindy to the Bedford Historical Preservation Board for a three-year term?
By Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Yes, and Dot, could you wait? Thank you for volunteering.
I don't know if you'll find the time, but that's quite a bit to see. Our next appointment is for Board of Zoning Appeals. Can we get a motion to appoint Lynette Spence to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a three-year term?
I have a motion for such by Saunders, second by Mizek. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
I believe we have the Spence here. Welcome, I thank you for volunteering.
And then our next is Housing Council. A motion to appoint Kathy Dulick to the Housing Council for a four-year term.
I have a motion for appointment by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And the next motion?
To appoint Anthony Longino Thomas to the Civil Service Commission. Is it also the BCA? No, just the Civil Service Commission, correct? For, for a three-year term.
Scratch the BCA part.
I just, I don't know if it was doing both for some reason. Can we get a motion to that effect?
I have a motion for, by Mizek, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And with that, Anthony, if I can have you come forward and you need to do an oath of office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Because this is civil service, you have to take an oath. Raise your hand. I, Anthony Longino Thomas. Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support-
That I will support-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio-
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and Laws of the City of Bedford.
And the Charters and Laws of the City of Bedford.
And faithfully-
And faithfully.
Honestly-
Honestly.
And impartially-
And impartially.
Discharge the duties-
Discharge the duties.
Of the position of Civil Service Commission Member-
Of the position of Civil Service Commission Member.
Of the City of Bedford, Ohio.
Of the City of Bedford, Ohio.
So help you God.
So help you God.
You guys sit up here. If we don't sign it now, these guys walk away and then we're chasing you. And, uh, anybody here with you today?
My wife.
Mike, you want to introduce me?
That's my wife, Bridgette.
Anthony, you're a former police officer.
Yes, sir. I retired from the city of Soul in twenty years and now I work part-time with the City of Bed, excuse me, the City of Beachwood at their schools, police office.
Well, good, thanks for joining us.
My pleasure, sir, thank you.
And I don't want you other board members to feel slighted because we don't swear yet. We, we do appreciate everything that the board members do for us. Like I've said before, if it wasn't for our board members taking care of planning and zoning and civil service and all that, we'd be here five, six nights a week doing that stuff. So again, thanks to all of you that do that and to the current members, civil service and planning. Thanks for being here. Get my reader going. I got it right. Oh, okay. That was it? We're on the next ordinance. Uh, ordinance number ninety-five sixty-two dash eighteen.
Lending ordinance number ninety-one seventy dash fourteen of chapter nineteen forty-four of our ordinances of the city, which outlines the requirements for prohibited uses in the historical downtown district and declaring an emergency.
And you got a motion for suspension by Mizek, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Yes.
And a motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Mike, you want to take that one?
Sure.
It was recommended, there were some inquiries that came over regarding payday type loan operations and, you know, businesses who own small, short-term, unsecured loans, regardless of whether repayment is linked to a borrower as payday. It was the intention to include this as a prohibited use in a historic district. And all, all this ordinance is, is adding that type of use as a prohibited use in the historic downtown.
Prohibiting and prohibited use from down there. Can we call the roll, please?
Saunders?
No.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five sixty-three dash eighteen.
An ordinance authorizing change order number three for the residential water meter contract with United Systems and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
A motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Mizek. Mike?
This is the last payment that was being made for the project. We were working with United, who was installing all the meters and the residences. We have wrapped that up. There is a small number of properties that we still need to get in and either replace the existing meter or simply add the ERTS, which is the automatic reading device. We haven't been able to get into these properties, either the water's been shut off in their vacant or the bank owned, or there's been a conflict as far as scheduling it with the property owner. We'll be able to, it's such a smaller amount of locations that we're going to be able to do those installs on our own. So this is the last payment to that company. It will not exceed, the total amount is eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars for that contract. If council recalls, originally the amount that was borrowed in budget in four was one point two million dollars. So we came in substantially under with this project. And obviously Sean and Clint, Water Apartment, they've worked and really tried to keep this number. If there's installs that they need to do or that they were able to assist with, we would do that to try to keep this number down. But this will be the last payment with that company.
I agree, we thank her for, you know, being under budget, that's a significant amount to be, to elsewhere, so that's, that's really good. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
The next two ordinance has to do with automated payment system for the Recreation Department and it's our wish to put them on first reading. I have a couple questions on it. Ordinance number ninety-five sixty-four dash eighteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year contract for credit card payment service with Anovia Payments LLC and Merrick Bank Corporation to complement the e-track software registration process and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for first reading by Saunders, second by Mizek. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five sixty-five dash eighteen.
Should say ordinance authorizing the city manager to, second, I got all these contracts here, one second. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter a contract with e-track before a, I don't know, so we're still looking for the ordinance. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a five-year contract for recreation software with St. Andrews Park and Playground, doing business as e-track and declaring an emergency.
Again, we should do that on first reading. I can have a motion for such. By Janutus, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five sixty-six dash eighteen. I got a lot of paper, yeah, there's a lot of contracts, I think.
Ninety-five sixty-six, right? The ordinance, lending ordinance number ninety-three seventeen dash fifteen and ninety-seven, ninety-four twenty-seven dash sixteen and ninety-five forty-three dash seventeen regarding chapter seven, section eight, ten, entitled Penalty, Interest, Fees and Charges and Declaring an Emergency.
A motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders.
Just to clean up our income tax ordinance to clarify what fees we can charge for people who haven't paid their taxes or haven't cooperated with us. And that's basically it. There was a split in authority between the courts as to what we could charge and what we couldn't charge, so we amended it to comply with what we believe is the, what they meant by the ordinance, by the state code that we adopted. That's about it, it's basically.
Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number ninety-five sixty-seven dash eighteen.
Lending ordinance number ninety-three seventeen dash fifteen, section one seventy-eight point zero six-two, entitled Net Profit, Income Subject to Net Profit Tax, Alternative Aportion in Section one seventy-eight point zero nine-three, entitled Use of Ohio Business Gateway, Types of Filing Authorized of the Codified Orchesters of the City, Related to Chapter one seventy-eight, entitled Municipal Income Tax and Declaring an Emergency.
A motion for suspension Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Yes.
And a motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janutus.
Just briefly, it's, it's, go ahead, there are questions.
I just, I just wanted to make a statement that this is the House Bill forty-nine that the state passed. That's another grab for money from the municipalities and that we have no choice basically in not passing, or we have to pass this. It's one of those things where the state's in our back pocket again, taking more of our local money and we have no choice in the matter. It's a violation of home rule, which is written fortunately in the actual ordinance, so I'm glad to see that's in there.
Right. We're part of a consortium of several cities, places and counties and they're all fighting against the state for them trying to charge us money to collect income tax that we already do. They're trying to charge us, they're, they want to collect all the taxes, pay us a fee for them collecting it, but we already do that and we don't need them. So it's just taking more money and taking away, like Don said, or chipping away at our home rule, which is really getting beat up month after month by the State House. Call the roll, please.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Nizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And now we come to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, address and your comment.
I guess my name's Beth Ozio Stewart, ninety-three Avalon, and I respectfully ask for six minutes of your time. I've tried to condense it as fast as I could. I don't know what your timer is Heather, but I practice. And then I have a packet of information when I'm done. I have many concerns about the report labeled the City of Bedford, Ohio's Summary of Whitetail Deer Management, Winter two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. On page one, it states, "In the previous five years, the number of deer killed from deer car collisions known to us was three hundred and forty-four. That statement is inaccurate as the actual number is one eighty-one, which was provided in previous documents by the former police chief. Why is the number almost twice as much as the actual number? Is the number inflated to try to justify a program? On page three, it reads, "A majority of the culling was done by simply checking the feeders by officers while on routine patrol. while on routine patrol. When deer were observed, an attempt was made to neutralize them. The officer then continued his routine patrol duties." When culling was first discussed at many council meetings, the city stated the culling would be done safely. Two officers would be present at the sites, and at times, a third officer, chief, or an employee would be in attendance to secure the site and keep it safe. According to this statement, on a routine patrol, if deer are observed at the feeders, they will be neutralized, and then the officer will return to his patrol. What happened to additional staffing providing safety? Are we no longer using, as in the past, the two officers with sharpshooting certification? Any and all officers are now killing deer? What happened to shooting at a downward angle? If they quickly returned to patrol, what happens to the deer? If the resident receiving the deer isn't in attendance or at home, how were the deer processed since the officer is quickly continuing his shift? What happens if the deer is wounded and runs? How can the officer return to duty and track down a wounded deer? On page five, it reads under nine three, number three. "The most disappointing factor was that after securing four bait sites in Zones Three and Four, we were shut down. Three of the four would have proven to be very productive as we immediately were seeing large quantities of deer at the feeders as soon as they were put into operation. These were in areas where we really needed to remove a good number of deer. The reason we were shut down was that after removing two deer on the first day at one site, a couple residents complained about us culling in the area after seeing us remove the deer and alleging to have heard the gunshots. We were ordered not to shoot in those areas anymore. Section three is full of opinions, such as would have proven. Residents did hear shots, not allegedly, and they reported them, for they were scared and did not know the culling was occurring in fear of criminal activity. And council heard from the resident who saw the deer being removed. In the next paragraph, it states, 'Public pressure from less than 1% of our citizens made it impossible to meet our goals,' also an opinion. In quotes, 'Myself and others involved in the program plan to address these issues in the near future so they do not have effect on the year's effort,' thinking at next year. What is the plan for next year he implied was being created? Council needs to be informed of changes in the program year to year.' On page six, it states, "The Service Department has been attempting to put more deer crossing signs up. When I gave a comprehensive deer management proposal to the council, I included the need to increase the signage in hotspots as a proven method to reduce accidents. Though it took some time, I was told the signage was complete. Therefore, was the signage increased, or were we attempting to increase it?" City ordinance 50520, Hunting and Trapping Regulated Section D reads, "Any city authorized animal control or deer management program, including special permits indicated below, is subject to annual review by city council for the purpose of evaluation of efficiency, costs, methods, and expressed approval for continuation." Section E reads, "Whoever violates this section is guilty of a misdemeanor in the first degree. However, an annual review for the continuation did not occur with council before the hunt this year, which is currently going. However, our own ordinance is not being enforced. The past city council did revise the ordinances involving hunting and restricted firearm and bow hunting within the city limits, along with banning the cruel trap of bow methods, which is very much appreciated. And yet, this report has incorrect information, opinions, and unfactual information, along with the fact that council did not follow its own ordinance. I have serious concerns about safety issues involving the culling due to the information and lack of information and details in this report. The city also agreed to bring in a wildlife expert to educate the public about deer. He has come the following two years and has done an excellent job. Though he's for the culling, he did agree that sterilization is a viable deer management tool, though it is costly. Many cities across the country are conducting deer sterilization programs and have had good results, such as Clifton, Ohio, Ann Arbor, Michigan, Fairfax, Virginia, and more. Bedford could apply for a grant to cover deer sterilization and be a leader in safe, humane ways to control deer population. Culling simply does not work, which is why the Cleveland Metro Parks has done it for 20 years, even though they originally stated it would only be one year. When a sudden loss of deer occur in the area, compensatory rebound effect will occur, with the remaining dose reacting by being more fertile and having more fawns. The deer have never been counted, and just randomly choosing a number each year to kill them and call it a deer management plan is not only unscientific, cruel, ineffective, and costly. Killing of deer is a very emotional and controversial subject, and has in some communities turned neighbors against neighbors. However, sterilization can't be a perfect solution to both sides of the issue. By conducting an innovative sterilization program, the city can attract new residents. On December 5, 2014, the National Institute of Health, which is the number one institution in the U.S. who looks out for the health and well-being of American citizens, after researching methods to control urban deer population and talking with the Wildlife Rescue Incorporated Group, which was working with sterilizing deer in Fairfax, they chose deer sterilization spaying over using any other form of lethal or non-lethal methods. And then I just have a packet of information for you. And Mr. Fluhard, and Ms. Rhodes, yours has just two other additional paperwork from the past. Not all the stuff from the past, because it's not relevant. But you do have two other pieces of paper. And I would be happy to give that to you after the meeting. David?
Thank you.
Barbara McDaniel, 186 Summer Road. And I have to announce, we have a Grand Canyon on Summer Road. This started last fall. The gas company came, the gas company went. They filled it in two or three times. I'm not going to. It's right next to the curb. It's 13 inches deep right now, 41 inches long, and 18 inches wide. And it's real green there, and there's no septic tank.
Except by your house?
And I had... The water department was next door, so I flagged them down, showed them. And this was back probably in the late fall, before Christmas. They ran a sensor. There's no water down there, but something, I think, is under the road, something with the entrance structure or pipe, something is not right. And if I'm not mistaken, I haven't walked with the snow, but it seems to me I saw a couple other areas on Summer Road further down that were starting to be the same. So I have the statistics here.
You have the addresses?
It's at the north end. It's almost my neighbor's apron.
Right by your house?
In the tree lawn, right by the street, the curb. You can see the concrete all the way down.
Okay, yeah.
And it's bigger than it was two weeks ago. I was going to bring it up. Two weeks ago at the meeting, I measured it today, and it's bigger.
Yeah, see what happens after all this rain. Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome.
Kathy Williams, 491 Williamson. I want to give kudos to the fire department, because I went for the CPR AED, and they were very informative and very knowledgeable about a lot of things. So as a citizen, I would like you to give that kudos to them for what they do. They're very appreciative. And I hope that in the very near future, I understand that we want to get our police force up to snuff, and I would love to see our firemen, those two firemen, because of the grant business, that someday, soon, we can fill those positions. My other question is, I noticed that at the southeast dispatch, now Maple Heights pulled out, and Garfield Heights pulled out. How much was that equipment that was installed there?
Significant. The county contributed significantly.
It was like millions. We didn't have to put any money in for that. And then now the city of Bedford Heights gets to keep all that?
It's still under control of the county.
Okay.
So they could add more cities over as they go.
Cities.
Yes.
But I noticed that there seem to be more cities coming into the one that we are now in.
Correct. As far as whose equipment that is, and who's going to keep that?
That's our county.
That's between that. And we're at CBD, I think, the Municipality Council, and all our residents. I think it's a well-run operation. It's a smart decision. And what they're doing with their equipment, that's kind of on them. But we did not contribute to the acquisition or purchase of a large amount of that. No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Marilyn Koech, 767 Archer. As you know, I'm a mayor's wife, and normally I don't speak. But I've been seeing a lot on Facebook, and I've heard people talking. I've gotten emails and stuff about something that's not necessarily affecting just our city, but the whole state of Ohio. It's... Many people in Bedford, as well as in council, are in favor of Ohio HB 175, which is the urban homesteading law, and they feel it should be passed. And I strongly disagree. I hope other people in the city feel the same way that I do. I feel that people that... Having raising chickens, goats, geese, ducks, all kinds of animals that are... Small animals are great if you live in the country or in a rural area. But when you live in the city, it's very difficult. I have grandparents that run a farm, so I know what farms are like. They're dirty. They're smelly. They are not the cleanest places in the world. And although we may have some citizens who keep their chickens in, need little fences or whatever, if they... Chickens, even though they say can't fly, they can fly. They can fly over a fence. My grandmother used to pick them up and throw them back over the fence again every time they flew over. My feeling is that we have already had deer, and raccoons, and skunks, and groundhogs, and chipmunks, and all kinds of other animals that we can't do anything about. Now we're going to add a lot of other, possibly other animals. And I just think we have small lots in our city. We at one time had a lot that was 40 by 80. If you try to live on a lot that's 40 by 80, and you have an extra neighbor that's got animals in their yard, and you have to put up with the smell, and the dirt, and the feathers, and everything else, how could you even sit out in your yard and enjoy yourself? You know, have a cookout or anything? As well as the fact that these animals often bring rats, which now you have another problem. And so I just feel really strongly about this. This is like something I felt that if you want animals like that, you have the right and the privilege to move to rural areas and to move to farms. But now if they start in our cities, where do I go? Where can I go if I want to live in a city and not have animals? Because there will be nowhere to go if you don't want to have animals around, if they're now all going to be in our cities as well. So I'm just hoping that I am definitely going to write to my senator and my House representative, and hopefully this bill will not pass, and I hope other citizens will feel the same way.
Thank you.
Jim Slavka, 130 Green. Could you give an update on the gas pipeline situation? Seems like they're corner of Broadway and Union. They've been there for months. And only other comment I can make on that is, I notice a flagman, I go by that area probably five to 10 times a week, especially in the morning, the flagman will just suddenly come right out on the road and put up his hands. He has no vest on, no nothing. And I've almost seen him get hit a couple times. Okay? But just how long... How much longer?
Yeah, we'll address the flaggers, and we'll bring that concern up with them. So that area over there at Taylor and Union, they're... What they needed to do is they need to stick what they refer to as the reamer underneath the road. They needed to get it over to Taylor and have that to where they could sleeve the new pipe in. I know there was concerns with some other residents further down Washington, because that hole, there's a large hole that's opened up. All of that's dependent on when they can get all of what needs to get done at Union and Taylor. The equipment that they were utilizing, this reamer, was actually, it got stuck. And they had some significant issues there. And they only anticipated being there maybe a day or two, and yeah, it's been weeks. That's what's really holding up everything else being connected. You know, they did have a portion of it closed at the end of last week. It was still closed today. You know, they're moving as quickly as they can, but that is what the hangup is. It was that piece of apparatus was actually stuck in where the new line is going. So, you know, we're optimistic that that gets resolved. They have a lot of... I'm going blank on the word I'm looking for. But they have to come back, obviously, in the spring. They have to do all of that tree lawn work, planting of the grass, you know, addressing all these other areas before we will allow them to go to the next major project. We have seen some plans that have come over. Actually, they were hoping that the city would allow them to start another area, an area on Grant. And we told them no, that they were not starting anything until where they're located at now gets completed. And obviously, all of that addressed before we'll issue a permit. If you see Dominion and other areas of town, it is completely separate than this major infrastructure program. They send us usually once a month, and we try to pass that information on to council, where if there's a service line that has to get addressed, a routine maintenance of leaks at specific addresses, they send us all of those locations that they're going to be out there over the course of the next 30 days. They have to pay a certain fee to dig up the right of way. All of that we do continuously. So if you do see Dominion in other areas that's separate from this major infrastructure program, this, the major piece is, obviously, we need to get that Washington Street and all of that cleaned up, put back together, before we will allow them to move to another area. But they have expressed interest and actually submitted plans to the city engineers for an area of Grant. But before we even get into that and announcing the specifics and what they're looking to do, we have a period where we can comment and voice our concerns over certain areas, certain areas of the next project. All of that we're looking at now.
Thank you. Anyone else? David, you can have a seat. Maybe he's first.
My name is Dot Schwendy, 503 Lambs Avenue. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Gene Saber, the Garden Club's new president. And, you know, it's starting to warm up, and that means the bulbs are starting to come off dirt in this gardening time. So we have a... I've got the invitation on the table there for you, and I have applications for anybody in the audience that would like to know of our program. And Dave is actually doing a whole new program for us in 2018, so I'd let you know.
Okay, thank you.
David Knuf, 1136 Archer Boulevard. So I have a grand list here, but I'm interested Sandy's... I'll speed right through this.
Thank you, David.
So I actually, your calling was on my list, and I came to report that I did a straw poll on Bedford neighborhood watch, some of you are members of, I'm sure every one of you have known. And it was overwhelmingly in favor of a permanent deer culling program that the city should institute. And contrary to what Beth believes, I happen to know that the science does show that we have an unhealthy concentration of deer within the city. Results were approximately 70% in favor and about 30% against. Moving on, I was briefly going to ask about the fire department staffing. And there was a grant we had talked about, Mike and Frank, and I just want to know, did we actually go for that grant, or did we decide that it wasn't something we should do?
Actually, I had a conversation with the fire department about it last week at an annual meeting. It actually, the time has not elapsed yet. I believe we have another 30... I'd have to check on that, but I believe it gets released in the next 30 days, is what they had indicated to me, but we're going to have discussions of that. You know, as I've said during the process, it's, you know, the pie's this big. We need to try to figure out, you know, where we're at from a financial standpoint right now. We totally understand that. At the same time as, you know, that being in a position that ultimately, it's determining what else, what are we going to cut to budget that? And that's what we're trying to navigate through.
So we're still TBD right now?
Yes, correct. The first year, I believe, and we asked for a little bit more clarification, but first year is what is being presented is that the grant will cover 75% of the funding for two new officers, you know, two new people, and when you take into everything, you know, benefits and whatnot, you know, it could be anywhere from, you know, 200 to 300. I'm just giving a ballpark. So year one is 75%, year two is 50%, and year three is 25%. So it's not... It is the same grant, but it's not. The grant that used to exist when we originally applied for it, and I believe it was 2010, was three years at 100%. And then in 2013, we met, and they offered it again, three years at 100%. And we did those knowing, listen, if we can go ahead and that, that'd be great. But at some point, if they reduce that, we're going to be in a position to really have to look at it. And that's kind of where we're at now. But it's ongoing discussions TBD.
Okay.
Fair enough. The other thing I kind of asked about was the park place water discharge. I know maybe during the winter time it's stopped or still down or whatever. Who can we talk to to get an explanation of that? And I see that since you came in, about $300,000 under budget for the deer project. Maybe you guys have some extra money to get that fixed. Also, is there a meter placed on that discharge? So we have an accurate count of how much we're discharging, how much that's going, you know, affecting our budget, and so on. Is there a meter on there? And can we quantify the volume of water being discharged?
We can, as far as a meter, I don't believe there's a meter on there. What we are doing, I brought it up with Wally, actually, just earlier this evening, and in reference, those annual meetings that we've been having with specific department heads and identifying goals and kind of initiatives, big hurdles that we want to look to address. One of the things that we do want to look at, and we've challenged our task, our engineer's office with, is looking at Archer Row and all of the water going up there to try to come up with a plan that'll definitively alleviate some of those issues. So it is in the works. I don't want to come up with, you know, we did get a couple of different recommendations. But to be quite honest with you, one of the questions that I had was, will this guarantee resolve? But to be quite honest with you, one of the questions that I had was, will this guarantee resolving that? And it was never a guarantee. And when we're talking about, well, this is going to cost us about $45,000, well, we'd like to, what will guarantee the fix? And listen, if that number's 90, well, then, then it's 90, then we need to make that decision. But that did come up in our, in our conversation with the service directors, these reach out to our city, city engineer, and they're looking at making a recommendation to do that. As far as identifying that exact dollar amount or exact number, I don't have that. I, I could check if they do though.
In light of all the new meters in town, we should have a pretty accurate reflection of how much we're purchasing from the city and how much we're actually charging for, so the balance should be what's going down the drain over there. I have another next quick thing. Do you, you said 26 for Allen Wood. Do you have a tentative timeline on it like?
You know what? They, they've told us it could be anywhere from 45 to 60 days. Now listen, the asbestos part about it, the asbestos piece, they said, listen, that very well, based on their initial walkthrough, they think it'll be completed within 10 days. That will allow us to go back in there, obviously to do some painting, to do freshening up of rooms. We have to bring a lighting contractor in to do the lighting and then ceilings. With something like this, you know, this building wasn't built in the 80s. It was built in the 60s. Not quite sure what's going to be there when we start tearing ceilings down. So I'd like to just say, listen, let's shoot for 60. That's what we've kind of been telling everybody. Couldn't be sooner. That would be great, but.
The other question was related to the water department theft. Update on that, has, has an insurance claim been paid to the city? So we're still waiting that investigation and upon conclusion of the investigation, then we make insurance claim?
We notified our insurance of the pending investigation. But again, it's an investigation that's being done through the state auditor's office. You know, there's really nothing more that we can comment on that. It's ongoing. They notified us after, as we were getting close to the original time period that was going to be extended. We said that was fine. It was, you know, really didn't have much say in that. They're doing the investigation. We then reached out to our insurance agency, notified them, they understood, and that's where we're at.
All right, last but not least, that's one of, a few quotes directly from the Libri News infused by the editor Joseph Messnick in the paper that he distributes to the communities of the Bedford School District. "No Mohammed's Islam. Islamic Jihad is a system of lying, deception, intolerance, enslavement, theft, kidnapping, ransoms, murder, rape, hate, and death, and leads to domination by Sharia law. Mohammed's Islam is intolerant of all other religions. 48-year-old Mohammed forced marriage on a six-year-old Ashia and was consummated his marriage by having sex with her when she was nine and he was 52." That was put in the December 2017 paper, directed from the editor's comments. Also in the December paper in regards to former Senator Hal Franklin, he put in there, "Didn't his Jewish mother and father even tell him how to treat women? I know my mother and father did. What about those who enslaved and raped and beat women?" That was subsequently followed by a tirade about Islamic treatment of women. In the November 2017 issue, "Americans are now seeing the evils of Islam and all its anti-democratic tenants creeping into America and the land of the free. Obama and the Democratic Party with the aid of the Catholic Charities spread and locate the seeds of Islamic destruction throughout the United States. The rotten levers of the Catholic Charities sold and sold to the devil for 2 billion pieces of silver." Continues on. So as we're all aware, so in two months, he has made disparaging remarks against the three largest monotheistic religions in the world, which for those of us that need a history lesson, all worship the same God, the God of Abraham, the same God that freed the Hebrews from the Egyptians. So I'll leave the notion of separation of church and state there. And then followed with my question as to why anyone on this council would write for this paper and followed with my statement for the record that the line is blurred between this man xenophobic and hateful views and where the city stands on this newspaper when this newspaper is used to communicate city information and there are stacks of this paper to greet visitors at city hall. This paper not only communicates Joseph Messnick's despicable views, but also includes those of other extreme and fundamentalist bloggers that he edits into the paper. So I'll allow you council members who participate in this paper to answer these questions on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I abolish Dave's statement to that?
Heather, please. We're not going to get into a big debate tonight, but if you have a short comment.
Just a short comment, I promise. The reason that I write for the paper, I don't agree with his use, but it is the only paper that makes it to most of our seniors in this community. So I have a choice. Either I don't communicate with those people or I communicate through that. I would love to see another alternative, but that is not the case right now.
Yeah, I was in contact with the guy. I was going to start. I called, he hasn't called me back. So I don't know where that stands as far as the other newspaper. I'll drag him to contact him because, you know, we need a good weekly paper to get, to get our information out.
Does the city need to have, does the city need to have stacks of these things sitting in city hall? I mean, that, like I said, that blurs the line between is this a legitimate community paper or is this one man's blog and his own personal religion? So I mean, I, I was here two weeks ago and there's a stack room sitting right over there. I think the ocean, it, you know, like I said, there's separation of church and state. You should have no, no room for that here at city hall.
Anybody else? Seeing none? Thank you for coming. Oh, I'm sorry. We gotta have a call. I want Sandy to go over a learning. Motion for adjournment? I'm Spings.
Saunders?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Don't you?
Yes.
These are?
Yes.
You're just?
Yes.
For Lauren?
Yes.
Now?
Yep.
Now.